Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March 4th, 2021 Lebanon County Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of public record. Anyone wishing to comment, please use the raise hand function at the bottom of the screen, and if your chairman allows, we'll bring you in.
Thank you, Dawn. Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to officially call to order the March 4th meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and we'll begin, as always, with a observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise for the pledge to our flag. Well, let's do Plan B. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I assume you were a Boy Scout?
Be prepared. I want to correct. I said, "A" observance. I meant to say "an observance" before you correct me on my grammar. All right, well, we're into our meeting, and we are now seeking public comment. And we do have a statement that I believe Mrs. Salahab is going to read. So would you bring her in, Dawn?
The onscreen is black.
That's not good. Ellie, that's good. Ellie, if you'd like to unmute. Oh, there's John as well. Okay.
Actually, John's gonna read it, and we have other members of our group who may be waiting to come in. Michael Schroeder, Cornell Wilson, Rabbi Sam, Marcia Stober.
Just Mike, I think, that I can see of the ones you just mentioned. Yeah, I don't see any of those others, Ellie.
No. Jackie, Jackie may be joining us. I don't know. He's Anne Hopple.
Anne Hopple's here.
Okay. Aren't these meetings just open to the general public? You have to be invited in, or?
No.
Well, no.
We'll move you over to the screen from the attendees. They are open.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right. So if you'd like to read your statement.
Thank you very much for allowing us to do this, Commissioners. It's a few paragraphs, and I'll start. "We happen to be white, comma, live in Lebanon County, and use our property frontage to display signage that represents our positions on social, political, and environmental issues. Under our current provocative leadership, we became alarmed by the acceptance, encouragement, and proliferation of racism, hate, and violence in our country. We chose to display Capitol Black Lives Matter and Martin Luther King signs along with our Biden/Harris banner. As a result, we have been experiencing passersby shouting profanities and making vulgar gestures at us and our property on almost a daily basis." So to be a new paragraph, "These hateful expressions escalated to a premeditated act of arson at 8:42 PM on Monday, the 16th of November, 2020, when individuals conspired and burned a raccoon at the end of our driveway near our Martin Luther King sign. From video footage, a truck stops in front of our property. A person runs to our driveway, and almost immediately flames flare up several feet close to our wooden fence and a tree. The individual quickly runs away and jumps into the bed of the truck, and the driver speeds off. When the flames subsided, we were horrified to see a raccoon had obviously been doused with a flammable fluid and ignited. We were shocked that our community, quotation mark, neighbors would attack us in this way for their blatant racist message." New paragraph. "According to the FBI," this will be in quotation marks, "a hate crime is a traditional offense like murder, comma, arson, or vandalism with an added element of bias. For the purposes of collecting statistics, the FBI has defined a hate crime as a, quotation mark, criminal offense against a person or property motivated in whole or part by an offender's bias against a race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, ethnicity, gender, or gender identity," end of quotation marks. "Hate crimes are the highest priority of the FBI's civil rights program because of the devastating impact they have on families and communities." We have a website. Okay, so then what next paragraph would be, "We are especially concerned for the safety and well-being of our fellow community members who have been burdened for so long by racism and bigotry and fear of violence. Common sense and common decency dictate that mutual respect and acceptance must prevail if we are to live, work, and thrive together. We cannot tolerate this type of crime here in Lebanon County or anywhere else. Overt acts of racism must be unequivocally denounced by our elective public officials, community leaders, and each one of us. Justice demands that ordinary citizens speak out. Hate and bigotry can only propagate when good people remain silent. If anyone has been the victimized by discrimination or perceived hate crime, please contact the Pennsylvania State Human Relations Board and report the incident by calling 717-772-0523 or file a discrimination complaint. To get educated on racism, please go to phrc.pa.gov." Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And that statement will be entered into the official record of this meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Would you like a motion on the resolution that?
It's not a resolution. It's a statement that is going to be just entered into the record. The resolution from two weeks ago, they requested that we did not present that.
No, that's not true, Bob. Sorry. I thought the purpose of this meeting was, you know, we looked at it, and it was, you said it was going to be presented at this meeting, so we would like to address the resolution.
I apologize, because all I remember was that you asked, "When is our next meeting?" And I gave you that, I thought, but I can check my texts, but I didn't think that this was going to be done, but I'm certainly in favor of it, because I was ready to do it two weeks ago. So, Joe, accept your motion.
Yes, I moved Resolution 342021, opposing and rejecting all forms of hate, racism, bigotry, and criminal violence in Lebanon County.
I'll second that motion, but does Jamie have that available to read, so that?
I was gonna say, I didn't want to read the whole thing if he was going to.
I do. Would you be willing to make it the, a three, well, I guess that's right, 342020. Yeah, date is updated on, okay.
It was updated.
Ready, Chairman?
Yep.
"Whereas we oppose and reject all forms of hate, racism, bigotry, and criminal violence in Lebanon County, and whereas we are concerned for the safety and well-being of our fellow citizens in Lebanon County who have been victimized by racism, bigotry, or fear of violence. Whereas we recognize that common decency dictates that members of our community treat each other with mutual respect, we are to live, work, and thrive together. And therefore, be it resolved, we, the county commissioners, hereby acknowledge racist symbolism and condemn all acts of racism, bigotry, and hate in Lebanon County. We further encourage other public officials in Lebanon County to do the same, and we will support programs, activities, and public forums to engage the public in addressing discrimination, bigotry, hate, and racism through respectful, informed, and thoughtful dialogue."
It's been moved and seconded. All of you who are accepting the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay.
Okay, thank you for that, and I apologize, Bob, for miscommunication and misunderstanding on that point. The reason we had, we requested to have our personal statement and account of what happened was because in our original resolution, that was part of it, and then, you know, the version you just adopted, we moved that. So we thought it would be important to have our personal statement entered into the record. So
Very good.
And may have resulted in the confusion. But, you know, I do want to say, I mean, just yesterday, in the Lebanon Daily News front page article was talking about hate incidents against Asian Americans in PA, and in the body of the article, a gentleman from Lebanon, Pennsylvania is quoted as saying his, he's biracial, his mother's Filipino, and they've been the victims of racism. So, you know, racism has no limits. People who hate can find, you know, anyone to direct that towards. So it seems to me that, I mean, I'm so glad you adopted the resolution. I think now it's time to act and look at programs that can be brought into Lebanon County. This Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission does have no hate in our state. It's a program, you know, that they're willing to bring in, and I don't know when the right time would be to do that, maybe after most of us have been inoculated in the fall. But I'm asking the county commissioners to consider doing something like that and reaching out to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission on what can, what they have to offer.
All right. Thank you. We'll then now return to our regular agenda.
Can you, I mean, Anne and Mike joined us. I don't know if they have any comments to make. Would you mind if they?
Well, yeah, I, we're, yes, I'm not going to thwart their, you know, right to speak, but I was thinking we'd be doing the reading of your statement and adopting it, but we can take, go ahead. If some, if there is additional comment that's not been covered already, I would accept it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. With your permission, Anne, I'll just go first really quickly here. Thank you to the commissioners for considering and passing this resolution. I think it's a very good first step. One of the reasons why we brought this forward is because we would like to get this incident into the FBI databases on hate crimes, because that's, that's how we interpret it as, as a hate crime. And so, again, one of our goals here, but then, as you know, there is tumult in the North Cornwall Township Police Department. The, the police chief just resigned. One of the officers is, is facing charges for the January 6 Capitol riot, and so things are in kind of a tumult in, in North Cornwall Township. There was discussion last time about the, our inability to secure the police report of this incident, as well as the photographs and so on that were, that were taken. So I guess we'd like to also ask the commissioners to consider, or, you know, moving forward, I'm not exactly sure how we, how we do this, but to, ultimately, the goal would be to get this designated as a hate crime, so that it is entered into the FBI databases and becomes part of our, you know, part of the kind of national conversation in the record. So is there any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, my recommendation would be that with the, whoever's even interim chief, that maybe you would reach out to try to get closure on that report, because that was the answer I got when I visited with Chief Leahy at the time, and he said that because it's an open, you know, still an open investigation, that he would not release any pictures or information. So that's, that was where I was, you know, stuck, and that's why we revised the original resolution, because he was not willing to, you know, complete or was unable to complete the investigation. So I would say if there's a new look at it, maybe, maybe be more successful than I was when I reached out.
And, and Bob, I just want, on that point, I did speak to Sergeant Harry Ward, who has taken over for John Leahy, and he pretty much said the same thing, they're not going to release it. But I guess my point is, is that regardless of what the police do or how the investigation, you know, ends or whatever happens with that, regardless, I think all of us here could agree that it was a racist hate crime. So I don't see, you know, the one necessarily having to influence any statement or condemnation that, you know, officials or leaders in our community take, because I think that's what's going to be needed to address racism. We have to speak out when we see it, and we can't say, well, we can't because of a criminal investigation that may come to a conclusion or not. So that was our original point in putting it in the resolution, and I understand that's why you decided to take it out, and, but I don't see the two necessarily having to influence each other, and should not, in my opinion. They should not.
I guess maybe more conversation can take place, but that was my answer from the chief at the time, and so I was bowing to his judgment on it, since he was the one doing the investigation. Do you have any comments to make?
Anne? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you again for your time, for all of you. I just wanted to say that I hope that this heightens your awareness to the hate that exists in our county. I hope that the newly elected chief for the North Cornwall Township will stand for the safety of all citizens, as I feel he never conducted an investigation into the incident that occurred at the Salahabs, and I want to assure my children that we live in a community that looks out for all citizens, and I believe that should be universal. Thank you for adopting the resolution, and thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to the, no other raised hands for collective comments, so we'll move on. Is that correct? We'll move on to the, the agenda of the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of our previous meeting as presented. Any comment, question, or deletion or addition? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. I think Ellie and John are still panelists.
Frozen somehow.
Oh, okay.
I don't think they're, they are out on the list, and they're not.
We see Tina is with us this morning. Welcome, Tina, and if you'd like, identify yourself and, and your position, and then you may proceed with your report.
Good morning. My name is Tina Tobias, and I am the Deputy Treasurer of the County of Lebanon. The cash balance we started with was $862,277.17. Our receipts for March 2nd and March 3rd were $2,526,437.92, which brought us to a cash balance of $3,388,715.09. Our expenditures were $3,095,432.1, which brought us to a cash balance of $293,283.08.
Motion to
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to audit. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you. I would, I would like to add that our tax bills went out yesterday in the mail, so.
Thank you.
Angel.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the report as presented, subject to audit, and if there are no other questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thanks, Tina.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
And now we will hear from our human resources team. Do you like to introduce yourself, and then you may proceed.
Shelly Drew, Director of Human Resources. Moving on to personnel transactions under resignations and terminations. Benjamin Baker, Assistant District Attorney, resignation effective March 12. Susan Bitner, M.D.J. Clark Retirement, effective May 15. Mitchell Duesch, Correctional Officer, resignation effective March 2. Allison Kwitkowski, Full-Time Developmental Assistant, job abandonment effective February 26. And Austin Carpenter, Deputy Sheriff, resignation effective March 3.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as read.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept those resignations, terminations. Any comments, questions? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, Brittany Konig, Probation Services, two-week leave of absence effective April 5, returning April 20. Don Klein, Children and Youth, one-and-a-half-month intermittent leave of absence effective February 11, expected return March 29. James Hunt, Sheriff's Office, 15-days unpaid leave of absence effective June 10, with a return date of July 1. And Renee Ream from the Renova Center, three-week unpaid leave of absence effective March 2, expected return date March 23.
Make a motion to approve the leads of the absence as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded that we accept those leaves. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Barbara Moody, promotion from Second Deputy in the Clerk of Courts to First Deputy in the Clerk of Courts at the rate of $1,246.21 by weekly effective March 8. Malagro Zedic, promotion from Secretary D/Interpreter in the District Attorney's Office to Secretary C/Interpreter at the rate of $1,010.98 by weekly with $57.69 by weekly intermittent pay, effective March 8. Brittany Labarre, change of status from Customer Service Clerk in Domestic Relations to Imaging Clerk, no change in her rate, effective March 8. Anne Francesca Lopez, change of status from Docketting Specialist in Domestic Relations to Customer Service Clerk, no change in her rate, effective March 8.
Make a motion to accept the changes of status as read.
Second.
It's been duly moved and seconded. Any comment, question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Moving on to other transactions, please disregard the first one. President Judge Tilwalk would like to hire Carly Carmen as Customer Service Clerk at the rate of $858.49 by weekly effective March 15. President Judge Tilwalk would like to hire Dominique Ramundez as a Customer Service Clerk at the rate of $858.49 by weekly effective March 15. Renova would like to rehire Trudy Seifert as a casual call LPN at the rate of $26.41 per hour, effective March 8. And the Sheriff's Office would like to hire Kyle Harkins as a full-time Deputy Sheriff at the rate of $1,272.0 by weekly effective March 8.
Make a motion to approve the other transactions as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept those transactions. Any discussion? If not, favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same signs, so moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Stephen Davis, longevity payment corporal at the prison, one-time payment of $3,375. Effective March 11. Perry Gerner, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the prison, one-time payment of $3,125.0 effective March 11. And Alexander Getch, longevity payment, private first class at the prison, one-time payment of $1,000.0 effective March 11, and these are all in accordance with the union contract.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those Salary Board transactions. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Morning.
Good morning. Leanne Shank, Human Resources Assistant. Mandated conference seminars, I have Christine Wolf from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PDA Protective Services Basic Training online, March 9 through March 11, $20.00 total registration fee mandated by PDA. James Dunmore, Jr. from Drug and Alcohol would like to attend the Pennsylvania Association of County Drug and Alcohol Administrators Membership Meeting online, March 17 through the 19. $175.00 total registration fee mandated by PACADA. Kim Shaw, Kayla Conyers, and Brianna Rayner from MHIDEI would like to attend the CPR and First Aid Training at First Aid and Safety in Lebanon, March 16. $135.00 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement mandated by Ockdel. Chris Lize from Planning would like to attend the Fundamentals of Basic Physics. This is an on-demand, online course, $199.00 total registration fee, additional fee of shipping for the textbooks and the test, 16 credits mandated by DEP. And Jeremy Bertone and Tyler Rollshausen from Probation would like to attend the TASER CEW Instructor in Coatsville, April 8, $375.00 total registration fee, meals reimbursement, eight credits mandated by PBPP.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the mandated conferences as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those mandated conferences. Any comment, question? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Another requested, I have Sarah Gill from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PA Notary Exam in Lancaster, March 13, $65.00 total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that Area Agency on Aging request. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
And I have, I need a motion to amend a previously approved training for Andrew Brusicki from Planning to attend the GeoDev Summit online. An additional day has been added. It is now March 2 and March 3 with an additional fee of $25.00, so the total registration fee is now $50.00 with no other reimbursements.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend a previously approved training by Planning Department. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so next we would have, we have Mike Ritter from Domestic Violence Intervention, and Mike is going to be seeking your approval on local government support for an emergency services grant, and I can let him explain more in terms of what he's
There he is.
Or, there he is.
Morning.
Morning, Michael.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself, and then you may proceed with your
Great. Thank you. My name's Mike Ritter. I serve as the Deputy Director for Domestic Violence Intervention of Lebanon County, and all we are approaching the board with today is a request for certification of local government for a CARES Act ESG or Emergency Solutions Grant Round Two Funding Stream. I know that there could be some potential concerns from the board regarding that, because I know you all were presented with an application for this funding stream a couple of weeks ago. We did, we did submit through email to Jamie a response to any anticipated concerns about that, but we certainly want to welcome those and submit them into the public record today. So I just want to, folks, to understand that there's a difference between what we're talking about here today. Our state Our state coalition, the Pennsylvania Coalition Against Domestic Violence, is applying as the grantee for a state-level allocation under CARES ESG as opposed to a county-level allocation. And so we, as a member organization under PCATV, would be considered a sub-recipient. So while they're sort of have the same origin, they have, they come down through different streams. And so there is no concern that there would be competing interests here between the state-level allocation and the county-level allocation. Overall, Pennsylvania through the state allocation has received $16 million, excuse me, $16 million. And PCATV is requesting 6.2 million from that. The other thing that would distinguish this opportunity is that the PCATV application is specific to what's called Eligibility Category Four, which is that it's specific for serving only people who are fleeing domestic violence, sexual assault and/or human trafficking. So it would not be open to, quote-unquote, "general" population. Part of the reason PCATV ultimately decided to pursue this is, according to them, 80% of homeless persons nationwide have violence in the home as a contributing factor to that homelessness. And we have seen nationwide domestic violence hotline calls increasing 120% since the pandemic started approximately this time last year. The only reason.
Really for the. Lebanon County, is that a Lebanon County number?
It is a nationwide number.
Okay.
Yep. Though we did have an increase here as well, I just don't have a percentage to attach to that. The reason for the delayed timeframe, because I know a lot of the deadlines have apparently have passed, but we have received assurance from PCATV that this certification can be submitted up to, no later than mid-March, I'm sorry. So that's why we're approaching you here today. Ultimately, we don't know exactly how much money would come into Lebanon County, but the money that we would get would support our shelter operations as much as is possible with COVID safety standards in place. And when it is not possible for us to fully utilize our shelter, we need to supplement our shelter usage with hoteling residents, it would support our efforts to do that as well going forward. And then we've also put in a request to be able to provide some hazard pay for our frontline crisis workers who are most likely to be in direct contact with folks that we're helping. So I hope that provides a little bit of context. Again, all we're asking for the, from the board is to certify the local government certification, the form that we submitted to Jamie previously in an email. That's all we kind of need today. PCATV considers it's really formality at this point. DVI has applied directly for ESG funding in the past, but because it has been approximately seven or eight years, we just want to be safe and cover our ears.
Okay, Joe, Commissioner Litz, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mike, I know that you said you don't know the exact amount you'll get, which is often the case that we get a reduced amount of what we ask for. What is the ask that you made or would like to make?
I can find this. We know we're spending on hoteling right now about $2,500 a month on average. We can anticipate that theoretically rising as we move into the warmer months. And that's just because across the board, all types of violence tend to go up as the temperature goes up. And so we do sometimes tend to, on average, see a spike in people reaching out for help as warm months increase. Plus, you know, people are getting extremely anxious with the pandemic and related issues with that. So it would certainly go for helping in that type of regard. I, unfortunately, I'm not sure I can give a little bit more detail at this point. PCATV is really taking the lead in submitting kind of a lot of the details. So admittedly, some of those at the local level still have to be hashed out.
So your application does not contain a number of ask?
Our portion does not. The overall ask is for 6.2 million, but that would cover the entire statewide network of 60 programs under PCATV. So, no, we don't have a specific request or ask in terms of a dollar amount within that at this time. I think that would come after, that would be worked out in conversations after the funding is received, if it is.
Okay.
Can we get a motion on the floor and then we'll accept additional questions?
Yeah, I can make a motion to, for the Lebanon County to support the application as presented by DVI.
Second the motion.
Okay, Jamie, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to Mike. This does answer the question. And I did, I spoke to Sam Ortiz, who was an applicant on prior meeting in February. He commented here in the chat that it's, it is not an issue of conflict. I also spoke with Brian Smith just to inform him that, you know, Mike gave this answer. And so everyone's understood. And Mike, I appreciate the research and the thorough explanation on the, on the differences.
Sure.
The bureaucracy or the, it's a bit convoluted when you try to sort it out. So thank you for trying to bring some clarity, you and Sam understand it firsthand, so that's a big help to us. Any other discussion or question, Mike, before we vote? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same signs, so moved. I failed last time, Michael, that you were on to congratulate you on your relatively new promotion, so congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we get into some of the even heavier things here. We've got, actually, today, three different programs to unveil regarding COVID and funds that are coming from the state and federal government. First one being with Susan Everly of the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation for the acronym CHIRP, the COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Program that's been made available. And like all of these programs made available on short notice, so Susan's been working on that. And just wanted to give that little intro, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Susan. Looks like you're in a very warm place today, so you may proceed with your, your presentation.
Yeah, my assistant, Eve Beemanstirfer, is supposed to be on the Zoom. I don't know if she was let in?
She's on the way.
Okay, all right, I'll wait for her. Good morning, everyone. As you're aware, the state put out guidelines and funding for the Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. And one point, a little over 1.6 million will be funneled to Lebanon County. So as the Certified Economic Development Organization, we put a proposal into you to be able to do that work. So I don't know where you want me to begin, Jamie, or.
Well, we can start maybe with that proposal or that agreement. Commissioners, if you would ratify that agreement so that we can, you know, get it on record, have it in the minutes that you're, you're granting the LBEDC the program to administer. And then maybe after that, Susan, you can go into some of the, you and Eve can go into some of the details of what you have structured so far.
All right, let's entertain the motion.
Susan, can you answer just a question before I make the motion, please? There were three things when I read the contract and I was wondering if they would be inserted. And one was that real estate taxes had to be up to date. One was that the commissioners would get monthly reports. And the third one was that the awards to all the businesses would be posted on the website. But that's all incorporated?
Yes, yes. I wasn't sure about the being posted on the website, but we can gladly do that one. We can post them.
I know people, for transparency, ask for that, so that's why I thought I'd bring it up.
Yep, then we can gladly do that.
Fabulous, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the proposal submitted by the Lebanon Valley Economic Development Corporation to administer the COVID-19 Hospitality Industry Recovery Plan.
No, seconded.
Right, since we've already had some discussion prior to the motion, is there any further discussion needed? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same signs, so moved. All right, if you want to proceed with your outline, Susan or Eve, however you are going to present.
Okay, I'd like to introduce my business financing specialist, Eve Beemanstirfer. Eve and I have been working diligently, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even let you say hello, Eve.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, we've been working in high gear, so as you can tell, my mouth is still working that way. But we put together a nice timeframe. We are finalizing the application guidelines. We're finalizing the online portal and some of the other fundamental things behind the scene. On Monday, we will be sharing the message with Jen Kuzo from Visit Lebanon Valley with companies in the county to get the word out regarding the program. The program will be open on February, on March, I'm sorry, March 8th, we'll be doing that with Jen. March 15th, we'll be opening the program. And then we'll be doing the program on a rolling basis. And the funds will be coming into the EDC in a separate account and then we'll be dispersing from the checking account, which will be held at Stiefel. And then we'll be putting, giving that annual report to you monthly. And I don't know, Eve, do you want to share some of the specifics of the program with the commissioners?
Well, to qualify for the program, I'm not sure how familiar you all are with it, but to qualify, you have to show a 25% reduction in revenue as compared to a similar time period the previous year. They understand that businesses may have been open for different times during that timeframe that is eligible. So they are looking at that scenario as well, and we've been given guidelines to go with that. To be eligible is a 25% reduction to receive priority. You would not have received any other special COVID funding from Small Business Administration, the Paycheck Protection Program, the CWCA COVID Working Capital Access Program, or the Small Business, the EIDL Loan Program. You'll also be given priority if you were required to close your business for a certain amount of time. And if you are, have losses of at least 50% revenue as compared to the 25, so those businesses would be given priority. The applicants are not allowed to ask for reimbursement or any funding for anything that's already been funded from a different program. If they've been funded from a different program, they are not ineligible. It just can't cover the same costs. That's the gist of it. Do you have any questions that we can try to answer for you?
Commissioner Litz?
Yes, just one. I think I saw something where the first paragraph in an advertisement says you must have an NAICS number or something of that sort. And so my question to you is, that's unfamiliar. I think it's a federal requirement. But that's unfamiliar to a lot of people if they have an EIN and a sales tax number. Is that something you can apply for and get an instant response and number, almost like the EIN number online?
Anyone, that's a national identification classification, and that can be found on your federal income tax form. So, and that, the NACs is called a NACs Code, 721 is accommodations, and NACs Code 722 is food services and drinking places. So I would think the majority of the businesses would have that NACs Code established. If not, it's not a formal designation, but a designation that can be made pretty easily.
Okay, that sounds like an easy explanation. And, you know, I, it's only one of two numbers, so I think it'll be okay. So even if they're like self-employed and they don't get into a corporate return and maybe their number's not on there, on their individual one, they should be assured that it's something that can be worked through rather easily.
Yes, definitely.
All right, thank you.
I think there will be other designations, though. Travel agencies probably have a different number. I'm sure there are other designations that would, would qualify. Am I correct?
No, when you're thinking, well, because it's kind of tricky there, when you're thinking of hospitality, you're thinking of wider, a wider scope of agencies, but they really limit it to accommodations and to the food services and drinking places. They have it narrowed down, that's, yeah.
Well, maybe that's because they're the ones that have been most injured.
And just for clarity, since people that are out there are, you know, going to be trying to apply for this money, would you just repeat the dates that this money is effective from and then when the, the final time is that they can get the applications in?
Go ahead, Eve. Okay, so we're going to start taking applications by March 15th. And we will keep accepting them and they will be time-dated as they come in. So the instructions say it's a rolling application, so we are looking at them as they are submitted. And that program goes until the funds are exhausted. So the very last that we can take applications would, I believe, be June 15th to allow enough time for us to disperse the funds. But we have until that time to accept if the funds have not been exhausted by then.
Thank you. Jamie?
Just one other thing to add. Eve did a good job covering the eligibility with the CARES and not being able to double-dip on, you know, past grants and so on. Just one other thing to that is the minimum grant is $5,000, the maximum grant is $50,000, and they're to be awarded in $5,000 increments. Is that correct? Okay. Remember reading that.
All right.
That's all I wanted to add.
All right, anything else for the good from you folks?
We're just grateful for the opportunity to be able to put additional funding out into Lebanon County, so thank you.
It's, it's. Thank you.
Help us spread the word.
Thank you, yep. All right, thank you. And we'll move on to the next item, Jamie.
Okay.
You did on the agreement, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Thank you.
Okay, then next we'll have Sam Ortiz, our Director at the Community Action Partnership. And Sam will be here to talk about the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, which is a big undertaking here, not only Lebanon County, but everywhere they're doing this. It's eight-and-a-half million dollars of funding available in Lebanon County. Sam has been working on this for, feels like two weeks now, not sure, maybe three. And, but the deadlines and the guidance haven't been, especially the guidance hasn't really been available until just the last few, within the last week. So he's been working with a team and I'm sure he'll talk about that. Turn it over to Sam, and what we will need is your approval on the plan that he has presented. That is due tomorrow to Commonwealth, so that's what he's primarily been working on, and that's the action that he'll be asked to take today.
All right, Sam, if you unmute, you may join us and do your presentation. There he is.
There I am.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Jamie and everyone else in attendance, thank you for the time today. I will be presenting for your approval the County Human Services Plan for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. The Assurance of Compliance requires approval and signature by the Commissioners. Have you all been able to review the document?
Yes.
Okay, so if you have any questions about that, I'd be willing to field them. First, a portion of it is a simple Assurance of Compliance, which a Community Action Partnership agrees to be responsible to fulfill all the duties and responsibilities associated with that. Second portion, Appendix B, is the County Human Service Plan, Planning Process, which describes similar process to our Homeless Assistance Program, which we have been running for a number of years. Includes some information about. Includes some information about contact information, and then a simple narrative at the end here, along with proposed budget, which is simply some estimates, including the allocations, and the expected number of households to be served. Would like for you, for you commissioners today to approve, and then I can go into further details about the program.
And Sam, would you mind introducing, or at least mentioning, the names of some of the folks that are on your team to help with the implementation of this?
Sure. And I apologize, I didn't introduce myself, I'm the administrator at Lebanon County Community Action Partnership. So, a brief description, the program makes available nearly 8.5 million to assist Lebanon County households unable to pay rent and utilities due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The funds have been provided to us by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services on behalf of the US Treasury. Like I said, they'll be providing additional assistance to eligible households through our existing rental assistance programs. We're going to be working in-house with some of our staff. We have Sandy Long, our Director of Social Services, who's been involved in the field for quite a number of years, and is very knowledgeable and capable. Also have Soladad Oriasob, who's our case manager supervisor here. Will be teaming up with Lebanon County Housing and Redevelopment Authorities, with whom we partnered on the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency Rent Relief Program. We are working with Karen Grow at the Lebanon County Chamber of Commerce, who led the, the Cares Business Relief Program and did a great job, and also Fresh Creative, local creative digital marketing agency, whose services were employed for the mask-up campaign, and also for marketing and information for the Cares Act funds to local businesses.
Thank you. Did you want to give any more detail of dates or procedures that?
Sure, I can.
To apply and so?
Yeah, sure, the total allocation that Lebanon County received was 9,325,769. That includes administration costs, also includes a segment of 381,424 for housing stability services, which is basically going to be case management. The net allotment for rent and utility assistance will be $8,478,057. Pertinent dates coming up, March 8th is the start date, the official start date. We will have a website where we will begin to accept applications. That's going to be LebanonCountyRentHelp.com. That's being designed and implemented at the moment by Fresh Creative, who are doing a great job. And Karen Grow is helping with consultation and marketing efforts about that. It's going to be sort of a soft opening, because we did not have too much time to prepare for this, but we are going to be doing some outreach efforts throughout the life of this grant period to get as many people on board as we can.
What is the, what is the grant period that you're?
The, the program ends December 31st. We're going to be required to do a monthly report starting May 10th thereafter. Through July 31st, we will have to have obligated at least 65% of the funds, at which point the state will do an analysis, and they will recoup and reallocate excess funding, which will then be handed out for the remainder of the grant period, which will be September through December 31st. Throughout the entire time, we're able to accept applications.
And how are you going to accommodate people that do not have access or do not have a computer that they can go online and apply? Is there going to be a manual option?
Yes, of course, we'll have paper applications available here at CAP. And part of our outreach efforts are going to be us planning community events to go out and help people fill out paper applications.
Excellent, excellent, okay. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Um, yes, Sam, I think the one question I didn't hear you answer that would probably come up is, can the landlord apply for this funding and get paid directly?
That is, that is the preferred method. That is the preferred method landlords can apply on behalf of their tenants. The only thing that will have, need to happen with the application is that the tenant wanted to sign off.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, to, I may just make a comment, Sam's really nervous about this.
This is huge.
This is a lot. This is a lot of money, and I can remember back, you know, in July and August, when the cares money was announced, and wondering how in the world we were going to deliver that all by the, you know, first we thought, they thought it was the end of the year, and it turned out to be the end of November, really, realistically. And, you know, it's a big elephant to eat, and you can, as the adage goes, eat it one bite at a time. So this program, I would expect, will, will kick off, and like Sam referred to, a soft opening, it'll evolve, and, you know, it'll find a groove or a fine footing, and then things will start to fall into place, and he certainly has the right team in place. We learned that with our cares grants, Karen did a fantastic job. Denny Kinlock and his team, at Fresh Creative, you know, I didn't, I had no idea we had that caliber talent and ability in Lebanon County, and they did a great job. And, you know, they're preparing some, you know, the website and some of the forms that are going to be available on there. So, you know, if you don't know, if you don't know exactly how to go about something, surround yourself with people who do, and I think that's what Sam's done here. I, I'm, I'm not as nervous as Sam is about this, I think he's got a good team, and I think he'll, he'll, he'll establish a good program. And I think the key is just getting it out to enough, the awareness to enough people. There are Realtors Association, and then obviously, you know, the Chamber and other organizations can get the word out there, and I think word will spread just by mouth, too, as this program develops, so.
Yeah, money talks, but.
May I ask, is this going to be similar to the cares money, where we will be the final audit of the expenditures?
Yeah, CAP is ultimately responsible in the county, the county ultimately, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Sam, because we have an audit coming up on the last money that we, we filled out, and we'll let you know how we do on that, but, you know, this is a huge undertaking, and I'm glad that you've, you know, expanded your, your team to deal with it, because you'll need the best of all of you for quite a few months to pull this off and get some relief for the folks that are in peril right now. I know it may be early to ask, but you mentioned that the paper option that would be available at CAP, and you're going to do other community outreach. When would those, March 8th is for the, maybe the soft opening, but would they also, March 8th be, you'd be available with the paper? Okay.
Yes, March is, is the program's start date, so we're accepting all applications.
All right, very good.
One other comment, this is, this is going to literally take some case men. I think that Sam is planning on supplementing his, his staff a little bit with some experienced people, and, you know, that'll, if he does that, that'll come before you from human resources and transactions, or, or it could be someone that he just contracts with. So this will be a matter of literally sitting down with landlords, tenants, whoever, you know, to, to do some handholding through these applications, and that's what it takes.
But one of the good things about this program is that the intention behind it is to make it as streamlined as possible. The PHFA Rent Relief Program had a lot of barriers and was fairly difficult for people to get through, so that was one of the major complaints. But the intention behind this money is to make it as easy as possible for people to get relief. And it's providing up to 12 months of assistance, so that it's going to go a long way.
All right, but just keep in the back of your mind, that subject to audit part, because that's.
Absolutely.
You know, to.
One question, if I may, you said it's for a 12-month, is that a specified period? Are there beginning and end dates of that rental period?
The only specification they made is, for example, for paying arrears, that's money owed, it has to be accrued after March 13, 2020.
So a 12-month window, but it can be 12 months of time between March of 20 and December of 21, is that?
Correct, now, it's, you know, that's the maximum amount. For future rent, we can only do three months at a time. Well, after that period, the applicant will have to reapply with new payment information, et cetera. So for arrears, we can just do it all in chunk, but for forward payments, we can do three months chunks at a time.
All right. Very good, if there is no further discussion, we do have a motion and a second? Or we do not?
Do not, you'll need a motion and second on the, on the plan for the program.
Commissioner Ames?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion that we approve the program in cooperation with CAP.
Now, second the motion.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this grant request, and appreciate all the work being put into it. Any further discussion, comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, was that motion for the 9.3 million?
Yeah, that was for the plan, essentially for the plan.
Yeah, very good, thank you. All right, Sam, go get them.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a good day.
Okay. Up next, Aaron Moyer, who is already here and has a quick request to submit or to have invoices submitted on behalf of her agency.
Commissioners and Jamie, I'm Erin Moyer, I'm the Administrator for Children and Youth Services, and I'm here today to present first quarter invoices for fiscal year 2021 in the total amount of $1,821,777.41. And I ask for your approval of those invoices.
Make a motion to approve the children and youth invoices as submitted for the first quarter.
Now, second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, then we approve the invoices. Comment or question? Harry, none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Post same sign, so moved. Anything else for the, Erin, you have three extra minutes.
I do not have anything else, thank you so much, and have a great day.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Okay. Next is one that a lot have been waiting for. Talk about, actually, Bob, I think you have.
I've got a grant that we should.
Yeah, you have the grant to, to submit, and then the larger portion of this presentation is to talk about a community vaccination better, so you want to take care of the grant?
Yep. Good morning Commissioners, I am Bob Dowd, the Director of the Department of Emergency Services. First thing I have for you this morning is to accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, the amount of $79,024.41. This grant goes towards the maintenance and connectivity of our shared phone system between us and York County.
Okay, seek a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the grant for the, the communications.
Now, second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the $79,000 grant. Jamie?
I just mentioned here, and I know Commissioner Ames often brings it up, this is a continuation of the partnership we have with York County, sharing some services and ultimately saving some money, because FEMA awards that kind of cooperation with these grants.
Yeah, the, the maintenance portion of that grant, which is just shy of $60,000, is something that we would be paying ourselves if we weren't sharing that system with somebody else, so.
Excellent.
Good job.
As always, yes, we have a motion and a second on, on the floor. Is there any further comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
Right, the next thing I have is an ask that the Commissioners enter into a lease agreement with Seritage Growth Properties for the property located at 1745 Quentin Road, which is the former Kmart building. We would like to lease this building to use it as the community vaccination site for the foreseeable future for all vaccinations around COVID-19. It's about 120,000 square feet, and the intent of the site is to be a multi provider site where we would have multiple different healthcare providers coming in to actually do the vaccinating. We want to remove as many roadblocks as we can, give them the site, give them all shared resources, make it as turnkey as possible for those that are getting the vaccine, so they can, so we can make it happen quickly for Lebanon County. The amount of the lease agreement is $60,000, which is a four-month lease, and then it will turn into a month-to-month lease after that. And we will keep it for as long as necessary to get everybody vaccinated.
Talk about reimbursement for that?
Yes, this should all be reimbursed by the federal government through public assistance. They actually have a mechanism for us to get some of that money prior to even spending it. We're working through that process right now, I don't want to guarantee that's going to happen, but either way, we will be getting that money back before or after it's spent. And that's all costs that we incur with this site, so everything from network connectivity to garbage removal, to security, all costs that we incur associated with the site will be reimbursed to this program.
Commissioner Litz?
Yes, I have three questions, they're short. First of all, the lease agreement, I believe, says March 4th through June 30th. Will we get the keys today?
I hope so, because it is time sensitive, and I'll go in a little more detail about, you know, timeline. But the idea is to get the keys as soon as possible, so that we can get in and start prepping location.
Okay, then the second question is, what will our hours of operation be?
That, so let me answer that with some, some broader information about the site. So this site, like I said, is intended to be a large multi provider site. You know, it could be capable of running thousands of people through a day, but the bottom line is, this, the rate limiting factor here, that what's going to slow us down is vaccine supply. When we turn the site on, I still don't have a definitive date yet, because once again, we don't have that vaccine. When we turn this on, the hours of operation are going to be very dependent on vaccine availability and how the providers are able to schedule that. I would estimate that initially, it's only going to be a day or two a week, and might be four, four, eight, six, somewhere in there, hours a day. The long-term goal is to run it for 14 hours a day, six days a week. So at that, that would be our full capacity, 14 hours a day, six days a week.
Okay, so it'll progressively get more as more vaccine comes in?
Yep, just dependent on supply.
Okay. And do the suppliers have to be from Lebanon County, or if they have clients or patients in Lebanon County, can they?
We are working with a number of different vaccine providers to be a part of this site. One of them is Hershey Pharmacy, one of them is Welsh Mountain, one of them is Welsh Ben, one of them is.
VMC maybe?
No, CNS Protects out of Lititz, Lititz, excuse me. Which is, they're currently doing a vaccine site in Lititz, and they called us and said they'd be interested in partnering with us in this. So anybody that's able to participate and willing to, we're going to bring them in.
Okay. All righty, that being said, I'll make a motion to get this on the floor, unless others.
That's fine, make the motion.
I so moved to enter into an agreement with Seritage Growth Properties to rent the Kmart building, so that we can operate a coronavirus vaccine center, mass center.
Oh, I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman, but I have, also have several questions.
Go ahead, Bill, yes.
First of all, I'm very reluctant to agree to this, this lease, because I think it needs about three more pages of the miniscule print that this one presently has.
It was hard to read.
That's about a size four font, isn't it?
Yeah, well, for a person that's legally blind, first of all, it's a lot of garbage, most of it. It's ridiculous, but anyway, that's, of course, trying a little bit of the Ames humor there, which I know all of you appreciate.
It's an acquired taste, yes.
Yeah, it keeps, yeah, again, you folks have been around it long enough to acquire it, so. My other concern is that we have all these medical providers in here sticking needles in people's arms. Are they all going to be required to resign a release, releasing the county of any liability for people that get sick or die from these vaccinations?
I'm not aware of anybody getting sick or dying from the vaccination.
That's not my question, Bob.
Well, we can have them sign a release, if that's your concern.
That's my concern, I'm unwilling to approve this without. That's my concern. I'm unwilling to approve this without being assured that we have a release from each one of these providers.
We can get a release.
I believe that, don't they usually provide you with a copy of a, like an insurance, like their insurance company would send us that their first in-line kind of thing?
Just a key understanding with this site, though, is that Lebanon County government is not going to be registering at this point and dealing with the scheduling and management of the patient. So this is just a site where the vaccine providers have a location large enough to handle the volume of vaccine that they want to be.
I understand that, but I'm also familiar with litigation, and just the mere fact that this is referred to as Lebanon County's vaccination site, and will continue to do that. You know that we're going to be linked as providing these services, and I just want our tails covered.
Understood. We will, I will sit down with our solicitor and we will form a release of some kind and make it happen.
But from a, from a medical standpoint, we have no responsibility. That's what I'm looking for. Okay?
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to enter this lease, and without further any questions, we will, motion now, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
All right, the final thing I have is an ask that the Commissioners sign a memorandum of understanding with Wellspan Health, who is going to be the primary provider at this vaccine site. And this is basically an agreement that outlines some broad responsibilities and, you know, real high level. Each vaccine provider is responsible for everything within their vaccine operation. We're going to take on anything that is site-centric and not specific to the vaccine provider, so, and that's how this agreement's written. We're going to manage things like, you know, parking and traffic flow and site security. The vaccine providers manage things like scheduling, making sure that the vaccine's there and making sure all medical requirements are met, and they manage management of the vaccines, so storage and transportation of that. It's a fairly straightforward memorandum of understanding. I haven't answered any questions.
Solicitor already, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I was muted, sorry.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, that we enter into a memorandum of understanding with Wellspan for the provision of these services.
And I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. The only comment, and I guess, was missed, is my name is misspelled, but that, for the.
Oh, I guess it is.
Great.
Yes, Jamie.
I just want to mention that aside from what Commissioner Ames has asked for earlier, Wellspan was the only provider that asked for an MOU at this point. But it, we could potentially take this language from this MOU or something similar to it, develop it for each of the providers, and so before they start, we can have an MOU just like this in place and have something inserted in it for
liability.
For liability.
That's, that's a perfect idea, really is.
Commissioner Litz, did you have a question?
Oh, well, it wasn't really a question, just a comment. I want to commend Bob Dowd and our Emergency Management Agency, or DES at this point, and Jamie as well, for being consistent and making sure that our staff is trained and that we all participate in exercises, and you are prepared. And this is going to ease a lot of anxiety on a lot of people in Lebanon County, knowing that they can get in and get a vaccine and that there will be hours outside of work and all that sort of thing, and, you know, you've just really behind the scenes, you weren't splashing it out front in advance, gaining a lot of media coverage, but I think you deserve the kudos at this time, so thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have a few more comments about the vaccine site, just, just and stuff that everybody should be aware of, and I want to manage expectations rather than, you know, we're, we're signing this lease agreement, and we're getting things turned on. It's still going to be several weeks, if not a little bit longer, until this is actually a thing where you can go. And even when it is, it's still going to be by appointment only. This is not going to be a walk-up vaccine site, because there's no way to manage that vaccine. There's not enough vaccine supply to support that type of model yet. With the changes that the state just made to how the Johnson and Johnson vaccine is going to be delivered, that one shot was, was great for things like this, but you don't have to worry about that second appointment, but we will still be worried about that for the Pfizer Moderna vaccines. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that at this point, going to be appointment only. We are going to be sending out regular emails with information to anybody that wants to get them. The signups are live on our website right now, so. Anybody who wants to sign up to be notified as things progress, they're welcome to do so.
And the IU-13 would have an option to be part of this mass vaccination site to inoculate teachers?
The IU-13, that program is happening directly through the state. We have no part of that. If they were looking for a spot to go to do it, this could absolutely accommodate that, but at this point, they haven't reached out to us, made that request.
Understood, but that was the point I was making, that we do have room for them if they so need a site.
Absolutely.
Okay, Robert, thank you, and I did enjoy the, your participation the other day in the chamber with, with Wellspan, with Stephanie. That was very informative. I think a lot of people heard a lot of good stuff, and this continues to roll out. You know, good information and not getting too far ahead of ourselves with, you know, the supply chain issue, so thank you. Anything else for the good from you, Bob?
All I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Jamie, you're watching the clock for 11.
It's 11:30, isn't it?
Yeah, all right, we're in good shape. So, let's move on to whatever Jamie has. We want to hear from Joel on a topic.
Yeah, I've got, I think I have four or five items here. First one is for a deed transfer for a property located at 1320 Cornwall Road, and it is a residential property that was purchased by the county. I'll probably underestimate it, feels like seven or eight years ago, but it might be longer than that, that was purchased solely with the intent of creating an opening for a realignment of York Street at Wilhelm Avenue, which I think you're all familiar with that project, which has been sort of creeping along here. Pendot is, is the lead on it, and they have suggested to us that in order to streamline the project and the steps that are being taken, that rather than the county retaining ownership of that parcel, that it be transferred to North Cornwall Township, then there's only one entity they'll be working with in terms of the property acquisitions and the realignment, and any residual property being deeded, deeded back and so on, and rights of way and future maintenance and so on. So, we have a deed prepared that was done jointly by our solicitor in North Cornwall, and I would ask for your approval to grant that deed to North Cornwall Township for 1320 Cornwall Road for $1. The property original, originally, by the way, was purchased with liquid fuels transportation dollars, so not, not county funds, but rather state provided transportation funds.
I'll make a motion to transfer a deed from 41320 Cornwall Road to North Cornwall Township.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve conveyance of this property to North Cornwall Township. Any further clarification or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved.
Okay, I have real estate tax exemption requests for disabled veterans for your consideration. These would be individuals who have applied and met the criteria for the program. They are Carol Dalbert of Grace Avenue, Lebanon, and Larry Garloff II of Sweet Briar Lane, Lebanon.
I make a motion to grant real estate tax exemption to the two disabled veterans as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same signs, so moved.
I have proposed new board members to the Lebanon Valley Destination Marketing Organization, Visit Lebanon Valley. If you recall, a few weeks ago, we had some folks whose terms expired, and the board was going to meet and make a recommendation for appointment, and they've done that, and their recommendation is for Rick Stammel of the Ancestor Coffee House in Crapery, Northwest Drive, Lebanon, and Michael Osborne of Lebanon Valley Craft Brewing, West Main Street, Quentin, to serve on those boards and see here, doesn't, well, those are, those are the approvals. There's an FYI included in that, that John Olivoe, who is the treasurer, is going to take a temporary leave from board meetings. So Katie Allison will serve as temporary treasurer, but that's an FYI that doesn't take your action. Rick Stammel and Michael Osborne to fill the vacancies.
Motion, please.
I'll make the motion to make those two appointments to the Visit Lebanon Valley Board.
Now, second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to accept those two, and I'll tell you, those are two good ones. It helps diversify your, your board. Ancestor seems to be picking up a lot of steam with their, you know, people are getting onto that new venue.
They opened a second location in Campbelltown, too.
Yeah, how about that?
They're really on the map now.
That's awesome. You betcha. If no further comment, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Okay, I have a hotel tax grant fund application for tourism from Carrying Cupboard in Palmyra. They are planning to hold the Truck Trek again, which is the Food Truck and Arts Festival of Central PA, to be held in Palmyra on May 8th. And the cost of the program or the project cost of advertising and conducting the whole event is about $20,000, and they are requesting $10,000 toward that program, and this was started in 2015 by the Palmyra Area Business Association. They have so far donated, as a result of these, this event, have donated $2,000 in proceeds back to the Carrying Cupboard, and they plan for 2021 a more robust marketing plan to hit an attendance goal of 10,000 people, which is a pretty big event, and this would go towards improving and expanding that marketing for the event to neighboring towns around Palmyra, so. That's the application.
I'll make a motion to approve the Carrying Cupboard application for hotel tax for $5,000. I believe their total project cost is $15,000 according to the application.
Yeah, they're requesting five, Jamie.
Yeah.
Grant, oh, maximum of 10 I was reading from. I'm sorry, yes, fund requested $5,000. Total project cost $15,000. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They do have the match, obviously.
I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page.
I'll, I'll second the motion for the $5,000 grant.
It's moved and seconded that we distribute $5,000 to the Carrying Cupboard through hotel tax. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
I have one more thing for you, if I could. Each year, the, the county, as a member of the Pennsylvania County Riskful Insurance Carrier, we have a grant available to us of $20,000 for loss prevention activities or items or anything that we might put in place to prevent loss or to maintain a loss prevention activity that we already have. Typically, the safety committee would come to you end of May with a list of items that were, that are needed and seek your approval on that. We, however, can access this grant request in part or in, or as, as a whole throughout the course of the year. At the last safety committee meeting, a request came up, and the safety committee decided to forward that on, just a portion of that grant. The sheriff's office has discovered the, one of the magnetometers, which is at the back doors parking lot, is just sort of getting tired, I guess you'd say. It's, the technology has changed significantly, and they've had to have repairs done to it. It's still functioning, but it's just becoming an obsolete item. That is original, I think, to 1999, so looking at, you know, 20-plus-year-old, 22-year-old piece of equipment, and replacement cost is about $4,700. We have spoken with P Corp and the Loss Prevention Director there, and this is easily an eligible cost under that grant, so we would ask recommend that, recommend from the safety committee that a portion of that grant be used to replace that magnetometer, and then we can come to you later with the other $15,000 of that grant.
Okay. Can you, I'm sorry, do you need a formal motion to do that, or just FYI?
No, would need a motion to, go ahead.
Entertained.
I'll make a motion that we use the P Corp grant to purchase a new magnetometer for the back, the rear door of the courthouse.
I'll second that motion.
It's removed and seconded that we spend those funds, any, or that we receive those funds to acquire that piece of apparatus. Any further comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same signs, so moved.
Good, that's everything from me.
Commissioner Litz has something that she would like to pitch to us.
Right, I want to say thank you for allowing me to bring this to the floor. I know you haven't seen this before, but yesterday I was on a meeting with the Swatara Watershed Association, and later in the day, things kind of gelled, and I would like to give you a two-minute outline of what I, my proposal would be. The Swatara Watershed Association has successfully written a grant to obtain trees and tubes from Keystone 10 Million Trees Partnership. Swatara Watershed Association would like to offer a free consult with our master watershed steward, Bethany Canner. Now, she was certified through Penn State to plant native flowering trees like dogwood and red bud in Monument Park. Recently, Lev Town did a wonderful article where they tried to bring the community together on Monument Park, and this is something I thought we could do at no cost to the county, really. These native trees are beneficial to the environment, provide shade and aesthetics to the park, but won't grow as big as the existing trees. So the dead tree removal and dropping of large branches would reduce liability, and we would get free tree tubes to protect the trees from lawn mowing, voles, and deer browsing. I don't know how many deer make it down from Coleman Park, but maybe some do. Any, at any rate, we could solicit community volunteers to help plant the trees, and with Brian, a plus is there's pride in ownership, and that would give people a feeling of being part of what's going on. We also offered this program to all of the municipalities in Lebanon County, and so far, West Lebanon and Jonestown Borough are interested in trees, and I'd love to be able to add Monument Park to Leb, for Lebanon County. I did consult slightly with Steve last night, our maintenance supervisor, and he is willing to oversee the improvements. There might be one dead tree left to remove on the northwest corner of the fenced-in area, but he thinks the majority are, are down. And also, just to expand upon that, Bill Meiser, as a result of the Lev Town article, came forward and said the Red Horse Unit might be interested in helping with some of the repairs. And again, that discussion on Lev Town's Facebook page also pointed out that tombstones get a gentle cleaning so as not to destroy them, and there's no power washing involved. I think the product is called D3, and, you know, they would probably set up scaffolding around and clean it with this, just probably a paintbrush or something, but I think it could be coordinated. And finally, replacing the, this is the biggest thing when it comes to the stabilization long-term of the monument. It was pointed out that there is a limestone slab that apparently replaced perhaps a broken. It was pointed out that there is a limestone slab that apparently replaced perhaps a broken. Marble slab. And it must have been slid in and, you know, as one's going out, one's coming in kind of thing. And that's where it would take some real technical expertise. But I Steve said he would be willing to research who did that and what technique was used. And also, I heard that a marble is not as strong as granite and granite might be make a better replacement piece. The limestone is not good because water does dissolve it. And it is starting to show signs of crumbling. So that is important to take care of. But again, with the help of the Red Horse, I think it can be accomplished. And even if we had to buy a piece of granite. And finally, install perhaps some. Period Victorian streetlights. It would be great to just use hotel tax because that is a tourist attraction as well. From the Civil War and with ties to the Coleman's and Brocks. So the last part was just added on as a vision. But the part that I'm asking for approval at this time is to partner with Swatara Watershed Association and Keystone Ten Million Trees Partnership. To get some wonderful flowering without aesthetics and. So replace some trees that had been removed because they were dead. And at the same time, they're native and not. Going to grow so big that we have this problem with removal of dead trees in the future. So that's my ask today.
I just question though. Looking at the big picture of all that you've presented that needs to be done and. Things that you didn't mention that maybe need to be addressed in the park as well. I guess there's a sequence that trees should be maybe more toward the end of the project than at the beginning. So I again, I don't know enough about that to. Really say that with any authority, but it just seems that you wouldn't want those in the way of. All the apparatus that are going to be coming in and out to to deal with. The other issues that are presented at the at the Monument Park. So I don't, I could see that as part of a bigger. Picture of of a comprehensive look at at doing what we need to do there. But I, you know, look for other input. Before I would just go ahead with the tree part.
Okay, well, I was thinking about that, and I think that on the perimeter where the fencing is. You can't drive through there without any pieces of equipment. So anything would have to have a little ramp and brought up the steps and taken up to the monument. So as long as we're doing these flowering trees around the perimeter. And perhaps between the other trees because you want different age trees. You don't want them all the same age or they all die at the same time. I think we can do the perimeter now and then it would cut down on the expense since there is no. Cost and it would also show the public that we're working constantly. I know we painted the flagpole and removed graffiti. And taken out some dead trees. So we have done some things, but this would just show that we're ongoing maintenance and involved and proud of our heritage. And our history and that we're, you know, we're really. Doing the right thing when it comes to taking care of that park.
Man.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I think that the idea of the trees, I think that's a wonderful offer and and if it would be appropriate. For Monument Park, I certainly would have no problem with that, but. I think we need to take a different approach to this monument park. First of all, I don't like the. The degrading. Communications that we've been receiving about the park because I don't think any of the three of us are evil people or. Want to disrespect veterans or anyone else for that matter. So I somewhat resent that and I think that's a. An interesting way to get results. From my standpoint, I think we need some help, some professional help. In determining exactly what needs to be done in this monument park to keep it. As close to original as possible to keep it authentic. And I would like to see us reach out and find a consultant, maybe the, maybe we could talk to. The gentleman at Cornwall Iron Furnace. I can't, his name escapes me. Somebody help me. The director there now, he's on the Visit Lebanon Valley, Emory. Mr. Emory and see if there's someone in the the museum commission or somewhere in Pennsylvania. That can take a look at this park and. And if they're not able to help, direct us to someone that can give us a sequential plan to restore this park and then. I think folks will see we're taking appropriate steps because right now. I love our maintenance staff and Steve is great, but to try to put this. You know, re. Formatting and restoring this part to put that on on Steve's shoulders, I don't think is a fair thing to do because. He's great at what he does, but he doesn't restore monument parks. That's not his. His area of expertise. So we need to first of all, find someone that this is what they do. And not necessarily that our maintenance people couldn't do it, but to make recommendations to us and. And and as you were indicating, Commissioner Phillips, you know, what is the sequence of planting new trees and taking trees down and, you know, I know. That the roots and stumps need to be removed over there. So. Can we take a look at getting a plan developed somehow? And I don't suppose that 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 would cost a fortune. But invest some money into into doing that. And I think Commissioner Litz's suggestion about. Tourism tax, hotel tax is a good one. That would give us some source of revenues.
I think we're on the same page. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said, that's my pitch.
Okay, I think we're on the same page. It wasn't necessarily for our staff to do the work as much as coordinated and. And talk with the consultants and the Red Horse or whoever might be involved in. Making these improvements. And again, a master watershed steward, those kinds of people. So it wasn't our staff doing the work as much as coordinating it so that they're not in there when the prisoners are, you know, that kind of thing. And the sequence, I agree, and that was one of the things I brought up when this was brought to the floor before. But again, I see the trees as an opportunity. To do something now and. We can still, you know. Have a consultant. That's great. We talked about Bob Hoffman or Carol Hickey. They're both good, but also there was a suggestion to reach out to Adams County, Gettysburg Park. And talk to their curator or whatever, because they have so many monuments there and that they might be able to. Supply some advice. But again, we need someone, Jamie has so much on his plate. We need someone to coordinate what we do. And so Steve's willing to do that if that's what we would like.
Well, I think perhaps our purchasing agent, I realize that she's new, but. This might be something that we could talk to her about as far as. Doing some research and securing some expertise or some expert help. To coordinate this project.
That's that's a good idea, too. And Stephen and she can work together.
I I want to echo Bill's concern about Steve. You know, that is probably one of the busiest and smallest departments in their their vital in so many ways that. Put something that is really not his wheelhouse in his hands to coordinate. Is is and I understand he's not going to be doing the work, but. Just the coordination of what we're trying to accomplish there, I think, is a is a big task. That I would prefer it be. We look elsewhere for that that part of it. And I don't want to just do these trees because we want to show that we care. I want to still do it because the worst thing we can do is do it out of sequence and then we have to take them out or destroy something that we just did. I think that would be worse than being slow and methodical and doing it properly. So anyway, those are my comments. Jamie.
I try to. Follow it all together a little bit from.
What did we all say?
Listen to all of us.
Really, I mean, listening.
The same thing.
Listening to all of you, you're close to the same place, but I think what. What Bill's talking about is a master plan for the park and. You know, Coleman Park did a master plan, many, you know, their master plans for many. For many of the facilities around the county and that's kind of the first step to do. Some of the thing or to to plan out things as Bob said, so you don't do one thing and then have to undo it or find out it was the wrong thing to do later on. Carol Hickey is probably close to someone like that. It's more of a landscape architect, not really a Bob Hoffman. Thing Bob has his niche, but but I don't think, you know, that's a different field. To have a landscape architect come up with a master plan and often it's done hand in hand with DCNR so that there's potentially there's funding available. I don't know if this park would fit into that category because it's a very small. City park, you know, city located park. So that's that would be a way to have a master plan and then that person would oversee the carrying out of the plan. Steve, obviously, and his crew could be there to, you know.
And the same way with Red Horse. They, you know, I mean, maybe there's work that they can do, but under guidance, yeah.
Question.
You got to understand, I was told that I wasn't allowed to spend any money. I was trying to do it. Without spending the money, but if you're willing to invest in a plan. You know, let's go for it, but the trees are only available so long.
Who told you you are not allowed to spend any money?
You did. You said as long as it doesn't cost anything.
Joel, you said, you said, I have an idea that doesn't cost any money.
And you said, as long as it doesn't cost anything.
So I was just repeating what you said now, don't miscarry.
Yeah.
You want to call a truce here, Jamie?
No, I just don't want it to be misrepresented that we can't spend any money. I was following what she told me yesterday that it won't cost any money. So I was jokingly saying, as long as it doesn't cost.
I think we're willing to spend money. We don't want to waste.
We have to.
We don't want to waste money, right? Want to do it right.
Let me use that as a segue. This money doesn't, you know, not spend any or what does it cost or you will spend some. In the in the chat box, Pam Tricamo has been making some comments here. Where would the funds come from to hire a professional? The friends of Coleman Park have been the C have are willing to be the five oh one C three for Monument Park if that. If that's needed because it ties to the Coleman family. One of the things that I was, I wanted to mention to her first question, where would the funds come from? You could use, you could use hotel tax funds. Certainly, it's, you know, it could be seen as a draw. You could also, you've not done this before, but for your own. Property, you could use the Act thirteen Marcella Shale Funds. You know, you've just not, we've handed that out, obviously, and that's where the applications come from. A lot of the organizations in counties around the county. But there'd be nothing wrong with using it for one of your own county parks. And so. That would be another opportunity to. Put into the environment and and greenery and that sort of thing, which is what Marcella Shales. Grants are intended to do. So.
So we need to, it's another thing to, I I don't want to say put on the back burner, but. I know, Jamie, you're overburdened with a lot of things, but it's something if we can maybe just move off a dead center with this and. And and start to move forward.
That's what I don't want to, I'm not, I'm certainly not trying to push aside what Commissioner Litz is proposing, but it may be.
I don't think any of us are.
Maybe a component to.
Right.
Master plan and. The the grant writing. Expertise, you know, maybe that's the step two.
Well, I would be willing to make a motion to have. Our new purchasing agent put out a request for proposal to have someone like a Carol Hickey who. Puts together a park plan for us and then we can move on from there.
Okay. Yeah, that I don't know if we, I don't know if we need a motion to do that because what we're doing is going out. You're talking about an RFP then.
Yeah, because there's there's expense involved if you have to advertise it. So that's why we would need a motion to spend the money for the advertisement.
I'll make a motion that we we move forward with with an RFP.
I think you second motion, you just need a second.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Jamie, do you understand that motion? Got it. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so moved.
Thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate the open ear and your willingness to listen. And if it comes about that Carol says. The small trees on the perimeter or whoever gets hired are appropriate. Let me know and we'll see if we can still get you some free trees. They are rooted and planted, most of them. And. You know, they're beautiful and it would add color to the park and. I just really, it would be helping the environment. Let's put it that way.
Anything else, Jamie?
Just one more comment to Pam's. Note in the chat there, she said, you know, if there is a need for a nonprofit tie in that they already they Coleman, friends of Coleman Park would have an avenue. I think we're in a pretty good position, though, being a. An already county owned park to be able to apply for funding, you know, all sources, whether it's DCNR or. Other types of grants. I think we're probably in a pretty good position. There are times when a C three is needed. You know, to to piggyback on, but appreciate the offer. We're probably, we're probably already an applicant in a lot of these places, yeah.
And this meeting coming up, Jamie, we, I know you sent us, is it a link? Is it a. A Zoom meeting or is it, we just be observers?
It's a Skype. You'll you'll be there. Yeah, it shouldn't take more than a few minutes. It's just an exit conference on the cares and. They'll they'll let us know how how we did. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a Skype link, though. I'm hoping you're machinal.
Would you like a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.